All right, well, it's seven o'clock, so we'll start here. This is the regular meeting of the Mason City City Councils, like, 5:00 to 11:00. We'll call the meeting to order and let the record reflect that all council members are present. Is there a motion to second to adopt the agenda? Those in favor say aye. Let's get a motion for it.
So moved.
Second. Those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Is everyone probably... Mr. Trout is doing his two weeks for National Guard training, and Mr. Meyer, the acting city administrator, will be here, hopefully momentarily, just having a little car issue. One more announcement. We're gonna have... There's gonna be a planning and zoning meeting on Tuesday on 4/12 at 7:00, Second Floor, City Hall. It's gonna be a discussion purely about the new dumpster regulations in Mason City from the... From the new ordinance. And it'll be a pretty free-flowing discussion, and they're gonna try and address a lot of the problems that some of the businesses have. So, just a note for that, that'll be April 12 at 7:00, Second Floor, City Hall. You should see a notice in the paper, I believe, on Thursday or Friday. This is public forum. Mayor and council will make comments from the public on agenda items only. You ask to keep your name, address, and agenda item, the topic you're referring to, and please keep your comments concise, limited to five minutes. The clock is just up there on your left, right front of the podium. All right, well, seeing none, we will move to the consent agenda. We'll make a note. We'll talk to the Director of Library. The Library Board rescinded the action for 17, so there is no action to be taken there, so we'll pull that. Is there a... Does anybody have any items that they... What did they want called? Mr. Tarquess?
Sixteen.
Mr. Weaver?
So we can't discuss number seventeen at all?
Number seventeen, there's no action to be taken, sir.
Well, I thought we kind of had a discussion at the Library Board meeting today. I thought we left that with the sort of... How'd you hear your difference, Scott?
My understanding is it was rescinded, and I talked to the city attorney, and if there's no action, it's pulled, so... Anybody else have any items to pull? All right. Is there a motion to... On consent for all items but sixteen and seventeen?
Hold on, Mayor.
Yeah.
Are you gonna read the consent items?
Oh, yeah. Okay.
All right, number one. Regular special enclosures at March 15, 2011, communication session. Minutes of March 22, 2011, work session minutes of March 22, 2011. Claims dated March 17, 24, 31, 2011. Three, permits. Four, mayor recommending approval of appointments in boards and commissions. Five, administrator recommending approval, appoint, hire Aaron Keeter as data processing clerk in the city clerk and finance departments at Level 7, Step 1. Six, administrator recommending approval, appoint, hire Heather Patterson as wastewater laboratory technician. Seven, administrator recommending approval, appoint, hire George Parker as city electrician. Number eight, administrator recommending approval, authorization of change in SCO grant funds and the allocation of $25 from the police department's forfeiture account to purchase the handguns. Nine, administrator recommending cruel resolution, living assessments for tractions on certain properties and certification of same county treasurer for collection. Ten, administrator recommending cruel resolution, approving the purchase of two dump bodies and two reversible plows from Highway Truck and Equipment, Fort Knox, Iowa, for the operation and maintenance firm. B, resolution approving the purchase of two single-axle truck chassis from Interstate Motor Trucks, Mason City, Iowa, for the operation and maintenance firm. Eleven, administrator recommending cruel contract and bond for 2011 pavement marking program project number 11-1004. Number twelve, administrator recommending cruel flood 2008, resolution accepting warranty deed from 524, Thorf Van Barren Avenue. B, resolution accepting warranty deed from 407, First Street, Southwest. And C, resolution accepting warranty deed for property located at 729, North Carolina Place. Number thirteen, administrator recommending cruel resolution for appealing, resolution number 9-276, authorizing value-setting policies on proposed contract purchase properties in conjunction with the flood of 2008, adopting a new resolution in their... In the mood thereof. Fourteen, administrator recommending cruel resolution, authorizing setting the value of property contained within the CDVG by offer, authorizing offer to purchased property located at 2306, 26th Street, Southwest. Number fifteen, administrator recommending cruel resolution of contract to Arthur Lamar Engineering Consultants for Phase 1 fire and on-site assessments for file number four. And number sixteen, administrator recommending cruel A, resolution approving a change order, and I'll just go down A, B, C, D, and E respectively, with Blazek Electric, Channel Spring Corporation, Holland Contracting, Kinset Plumbing and Heating, and Holland Contracting. There's two there, so... We have... Mr. Tarquess wants to pull number sixteen. Is there anybody else that would like to pull? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, the exception of sixteen and seventeen? Excuse me. Sixteen and seventeen, that's correct.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, quick call roll.
Marsters?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Tarquess?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Mr. Tarquess, do you have a motion on number sixteen?
Move to approve number sixteen A, the amount of $1,295.
We're just gonna do A first?
Yeah, we need to go these one at a time.
No problem. Is there a second on A?
Second.
Mr. Tarquess, on this guy?
Yeah, basically, as Councilman Weaver alluded, he and I attended the Library Board meeting this afternoon, and there's a couple of items that the Library Board is reconsidering since the packet's been published. And so, the 16A represents the change order to the contractors represented in the packet minus $1,175 for the electrical work for the exhaust fan change and kitchen hood, until the Library Board can look into that further.
Mr. Tarquess, anybody else on this? Mr. Weaver?
What's the motion again?
The motion is to approve 16A in the... In the amount of $1,295?
No, less $1,175.
No, the motion is to approve it for $1,295, which is the amount in the packet minus $1,175 for the kitchen work.
Anybody else on this?
I'm not being able to wrap my arms around that. Help me out, Scott.
Just a point of clarification.
Have you got the Blazek change order? It's about the second or third one?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the 2470, you're minus how much?
Right above the 2470, the total is $1,175 for item number four in the change order for the kitchen exhaust hood. And so, it's 2470 minus $1,175. And the other three items are not in question on the change order.
That's... That change order along with D that are related to the range hood, though, right?
That's correct, but right now, we're acting on 16A. We won't deal with D when we get to 16D.
All right. All right. Thanks for the clarification.
Did you give us that one there?
All right, quick call roll on 16A. Do you wanna read the motion by understanding?
Is to adopt the resolution at $1,295. Correct?
Mm-hmm.
Tarquess?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Mr. Tarquess?
Move to approve 16B, as presented in the packet.
Correct.
Mr. Tarquess?
No comment.
Okay, anybody else? All right, quick call roll.
Tarquess?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Mr. Tarquess?
Move to approve 16C, as represented in the packet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tarquess?
Yeah, just to clarify, we are approving the Holland contract change order for $3,138.30 for additional hardware required at the access control doors.
All right. Quick. All right, quick call roll.
Tarquess?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Mr. Tarquess?
Move to approve item 16B at a revised total of $3,006.65.
Second.
Ten seconds. Noted, and that was $3,006.65. Okay. Give me another second. Is there any discussion? Mr. Tarquess?
That is the change order in the packet, total of $17,074.08 minus the $14,067.43 for the kitchen change.
All right.
So, we're basically doing the same thing here that we did to Blazek's contract. We're taking out the kitchen work.
Mr. Weaver, do you have a clarification?
Well, yeah, at the meeting earlier today... Has anybody gone and looked at the vent back there? Has anybody read the international code? Well, I would like to have a clarification on all of it before I pass anything. I'd like to know just what we are violating. Now, here's my problem. The blame is not gonna be on the Library Board or the Library Director. If you remember, Susan Fisher, a Library Board member, said that we have the most qualified people there are doing this library, building this library. We have the best of everything. Oliver and Root, you remember that? You remember that? I'm sure you guys remember that. Well, if they had the best of everything, how could they screw this up to the $217,000? Well, to the tune of a few thousand, anyway. They put in the... And Scott knows more about it. He actually bid on the job, I understand, or sold the vent. So, I went back there and I looked at it. There's a crock pot back there, a crock pot. Most of us have crock pots, which I leave on intended. That's what a crock pot's all about. And two, they cook bacon. Well, they can put the bacon in the oven. There's an oven, a gas oven right below this vent. Well, somebody screwed up. The fire marshal screwed up? The engineer screwed up? Or the architect screwed? I don't know who did it. But it wasn't the Library Board. They had the best of everybody around them. So, what I'm saying is, we're hung up here on, I think it is, number one and number two vents. Number one, you can have a fryer, new grease, and blah, blah, blah. Well, the fire marshal's telling us that when you cook soup on a crock pot, which is right underneath it, that that gives off grease... Grease... Whatever. Right, grease vapors. You know what? This is like the windows issue we had about rental property, the state, the window. We had a... All the landlords have to have a bigger window for egress, for the fire department and people to get out. But to hell with the other 9,000 people that live here. We can have whatever windows we want. So, I don't understand the safety issue at all. Today, I said, well, someone's gotta fight for this here. Someone was wrong. The fire department, the engineers, they got crossed. They didn't catch it, and it got put in. Now, we're gonna ask to change it out. I think the total is $17,740.74. I think what Scott's saying is, he's comfortable with everything, all the mechanics of the whole deal, but wants the different wiring that's gonna take place with a different vent put in there. Well, I say, somebody has to be responsible. No one is responsi... And it's all up to interpretation, is what I heard today, three times. We should've looked at our menu. We should've told the fire marshal what our menu was, or maybe he should've asked, if he's around. He's the one that goes into all the restaurants amongst all the other commercial buildings. This is $17,000. Here's what I would like the council to do, postpone all action on this. I don't wanna make a deal with $2,000 here, $3,000 here. I wanna keep that vent in there. I don't think there's gonna... The library doesn't wanna have responsibility for anything that may happen. I said, well, you know what? Council could take that responsibility. All I'm saying is, I wanna have somebody look at the international code. We have a city attorney. Now, I don't know if that's part of his job duties, but he could certainly look that over. He doesn't work for the library. But I like to look at the international code, because I think there's a... I don't know what it says for sure. I'd like someone to look at that, report that to us. I guess what I'm asking is, let's postpone this tonight, till we get some educated understanding of the international code, talk to the fire marshal, and also find out who could be responsible for this, 'cause it is not the fault of the Library Board or the director. Somebody made a mistake. They did not get the proper hood range above that kitchen. Well, the one that they want above it, that's got a fire suppressant, I believe, to it, it's for when you have deep fat fryers and other stuff. Well, it just so happens that soup gives off a grease vapor. I've been cooking soup for 40 years, and I don't mean just out of the can, either. So, you know, I'm kinda sticking up for the Library Board, where they're kinda being... It's the same. Well, there she is, maybe she wants to talk. But that's where I'm at.
Do you have a... Do you want a motion to postpone, and do you have a date?
Well, I... What, Scott's got a motion in front of us. I don't know how to bow that.
You can make a motion right in the middle of this one to postpone, that's why we're in the room.
That would be on 16D.
On 16D, you're well within rights to make a motion.
Well, I would like to make a motion, that we get some more information on moving to postpone.
Do you have a date?
Do I have a date?
Yeah.
Well, I would certainly think we could be back here the next council meeting. I don't think there's a big rush here. I don't think we're... I don't think anybody's gonna take it to this, you know what I mean?
If I understand, you have a motion to postpone until April 19?
Well, you know what? At least a little colleagues here go back and see what we're talking about. You ought to usually look at it and see how it's working. I'm watching it pull up the air right now, today. I don't get it. Now, Scott's got more expertise, because that's his business. He put a bid on the project, or knew all about it.
Go ahead.
Maybe we can blame Scott?
I'm fine whether you make the motion or not. I'm simply... It's not blaming Mr. Tarquess. I'm just simply asking, are you making a motion then, or not?
I'm making a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Is there discussion on this? Mr. Weaver, you have the right, you made the motion.
Thank you. I'd like to hear anything from Director Mary Markle, the Library Director, if he has something to say about it. I'd like her to validate the fact that I'm saying it wasn't the Library Board or the Library Director's fault here. It got hung up somewhere else in all of our expertise.
The way I understand it, I mean, yeah, you know, we work with architects and they have engineers who work on these. When this project started, the architects have always maintained that we would have more communication, which apparently has different requirements than what we actually do. So, when, you know, we sent out RRP's, we have a vendor who owns Kati Shop, I think there was quite a bit of room for interpretation on whether you need a type 1 hood. You know, what you're doing creates grease laden vapors. That requires a type 1 hood, as opposed to the type 2 hood that we thought that the architects and engineers thought that needed. And that's what they conveyed to the fire marshal, so he thought, okay, there's no frying going on. When we did walkthroughs, which I attended, along with our representative from Henry, we said, yeah, well, it's not frying, thinking frying, you know, when, I mean, at home, when you think you're frying, you don't think of soup and things like that. So, I think there was some room for interpretation that we certainly didn't understand. And the architects maintained that they had put this type of hood in other places with the same kind of food that is being cooked in the kitchen here at the library, and the type 2 hood has been sufficient. So, you know, my feeling is, and has been all along, well, if there was that much room for interpretation, perhaps, you know, we should... There should've been a menu produced, 'cause that's what triggered the inspection from the fire department that said, you have to change this hood. And it was well into operation. We've been ready for quite a while.
Well, what triggered it was two firemen eating soup.
Yeah. And then they saw the menu.
Well, when the inspector... My point is, when the fire marshal went through there, inspector, he certainly could tell the difference between the type 1 hood and the type 2.
Well, and, yeah...
And soup has always been... That's never been no big secret, soup and sandwiches. We talked about that a year and a half when we were building the place, soup and sandwiches.
And I think the issue came in with, you know, the fire marshal was working with the architects that is directed, and that's where the... We lost our way with interpretation of the code.
So, I'm not understanding everything here. So, is this cost to the taxpayers gonna be $17,000 or $3,000?
Well, the... According to the change order, the hood would be taking... Could be taken off $14,000. You're taking off tonight $14,067 from the Kinset Plumbing and Heating Contract, and you're also taking off an amount from the Blazek Contract because of the Ansel Manhole Pool Station, which is $1,175. So, yeah...
It's $17,000. Do-over. And none of us here are responsible for that. I'd like to have the international code interpreted, to see what kind of wiggle room or what did you call it, interpretation there is. I guess I don't understand that... That's where I'm at. I just need another couple weeks of information here and find out if we are making the proper decision. They use it... Other... The architects, Holliver and Root, best in the country, remember hearing that? Then if they've said they've worked with this before, type 2 for this type of menu, it's been fine, why isn't it fine here?
Mr. Tarquess?
The motion to postpone is not appropriate. Here's why. If you take a look at the Blazek change order... I'm sorry, we're talking about the Kinset change order. There's three items on the change order. The first is to repair drinking fountain for $279.72. The drinking fountain has nothing to do with the kitchen hood. The second item is to add fin tube radiation in Mary's office, $2,726.93. That has nothing to do with the kitchen hood. If you add those two together, that's $3,065.65. The motion that I made is to approve the Kinset change order for those two items that have nothing to do with the kitchen, which means by default, we're not approving the $14,067.43 for the kitchen hood. So, there's no reason for the second motion to postpone, because we've already covered the need in the motion that I made. Now, it's just a coincidence that the number here is $17,000, and that you're using that as a total. The number is $14,6743 from Kinset, as Mary pointed out, plus the $1,000-plus, and some change from Blazek, which we already deducted from their change order when we acted on 16A. So, we've crossed the Ts and we've doubled the Is. Now, let's talk about how this actually happened. Yeah, somebody made a mistake. But on a project of this magnitude, mistakes get made, and it's not the end of the world. The problem is somewhere between the engineering firm and the interpretation of code by the fire marshal. It's completely appropriate what Councilman Weaver suggests, that we get an unbiased interpretation of the code, because that's where the issue lies, with respect to how the project was executed. Yeah, I was a bidder. I sold the hood. I didn't sell the fans. The way the project was laid out was the engineer was requiring a UL-762 exhaust fan, which is a grease fan. He had no information in the plans and specs and what type of hood he wanted. And so, assumptions were made, which were very well clarified during the bid phase, spelled out through the process. And indeed, the engineer approved a UL-762 exhaust fan with a type 2 kitchen hood. That's a little bit of a hybrid, but that's what the engineer approved. So, the problem lies somewhere between the conversations that he had, or didn't have, with the fire marshal and the fire marshal's interpretation of the code. Now, at the end of the day, even after we do what Councilman Weaver suggests, I believe the right thing to do is gonna be to put in a type 1 hood. Now, that doesn't mean that the taxpayers are out $17,000 or whatever the sum number is, because that was never in the project in the first place. And so, this is not work that's... It's work that was never in... It's not like it's something that the people paid for that's being redone. What the taxpayers are out is indeed the cost of the hood that's installed that's gonna be removed. They're out the labor that took to hung it, the purchase price of the hood, the labor to take it down. Everything else is incremental that was never in the scope of the project. So, indeed, if the taxpayers are out anything, they're out in the neighborhood of, my best guess, around $1,500. But, all that said, we had a simple motion on the table, and we didn't have to have any of this discussion. The council should never be troubleshooting problems like this at the table. The fact is, with the exception of myself, we don't know what we're talking about. And so, we oughta be turning this over to the people that we hire and letting them have an opportunity to do what we're asking, which is completely appropriate. But to sit here and throw people under the bus and just try to troubleshoot is completely inappropriate.
There was Tarquess?
Am I talking loud enough, Janice? Janice? Getting a little wound up here.
Is there anybody else that has a comment on this? Mr. Marsters?
Well, I suggested a motion to postpone, but in reality, Mr. Tarquess is right. What's proposed for the agenda item here is not related, and I think it's clear we want more information for the hood, which will come back to us anyways. So, I withdraw my second. To postpone.
Yeah, it's actually Mr. Weaver's. And it is a valid motion, 'cause if you can always motion to postpone. Anybody else on the motion to postpone until 19? All right. Quick call roll.
Weaver?
Yes.
Marsters?
No.
This was the motion to postpone.
That's where I...
The motion to postpone?
No.
Hickey?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Tarquess?
No.
Silver?
No.
All right, motion fails. We're back to 15D, resolution approving a change order with Kinset Plumbing and Heating, revised, which is $3,006.65, which takes out the previous $14. So... Mr. Tarquess and Mr. Weaver spoke. Anybody else wanna speak on this item? All right. Anybody else before we go to response? All right, we're on response. Mr. Weaver?
Well, like Scott said perfectly clear, nobody up at the table here understands what's going on but him. So, I don't know what kind of action you guys are gonna take, and he told you he don't understand it. That's what I heard him say, and I think he might be right. So, what are we gonna do?
Mr. Weaver, anybody else on response? All right, quick call roll.
Tarquess?
Yes.
Silver?
No.
All right, motion fails. We're back to 15D, resolution approving a change order with Kinset Plumbing and Heating, revised, which is $3,006.65, which takes out the previous $14. So... Mr. Tarquess and Mr. Weaver spoke. Anybody else wanna speak on this item? All right. Anybody else before we go to response? All right, we're on response. Mr. Weaver?
The motion to postpone is not appropriate. Here's why. If you take a look at the Blazek change order, I'm sorry, we're talking about the Kinzett change order. There's three items on the change order. The first is to repair drinking fountain for two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-two cents. The drinking fountain has nothing to do with the kitchen hood. A pro, the second item is to add fin tube radiation in Mary's office. Two thousand seven hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-three cents. That has nothing to do with the kitchen hood. If you add those two together, that's three thousand six and sixty-five cents. The motion that I made is to approve the Kinzett change order for those two items that have nothing to do with the kitchen, which means by default, we're not approving this, the fourteen thousand sixty-seven dollars and forty-three cents for the kitchen hood. So there's no reason for the second motion to postpone because we've already covered the need in the motion that I made. Now, it's just a coincidence that the number here is seventeen thousand and that you're using that as a total. The number is fourteen sixty-seven forty-three from Kinzett, as Mary pointed out, plus the one thousand plus, and some change from Blazek, which we already deducted from their change order when we acted on sixteen A. So we've crossed the Ts and we've done the Is. Now, let's talk about how this actually happened. Yeah, somebody made them stay. But on a project of this magnitude, mistakes get made, and it's not the end of the world. The problem is somewhere between the engineering firm and the interpretation of code by the fire marshal. It's completely appropriate what Councilman, uh, Weaver suggests, that we get, uh, an unbiased interpretation of the code, because that's where the issue lies. With respect to how the project was executed, yeah, I was a bidder. I sold the hood. I didn't sell the fans. The, the way the project was laid out was the engineer was requiring a UL seven sixty-two exhaust fan, which is a grease fan. He had no information in the plans and specs and what type of hood he wanted. And so assumptions were made, which were very well clarified during the bid phase, spelled out through the process. And indeed, the engineer approved a UL seven sixty-two exhaust fan with a type-two kitchen hood. That's a little bit of a hybrid, but that's what the engineer approved. So the problem lies somewhere between the conversations that he had or didn't have with the fire marshal and the fire marshal's interpretation of the code. Now, at the end of the day, even after we do what Councilman Weaver suggests, I believe the right thing to do is going to be to put in a type-one hood. Now, that doesn't mean that the, that the taxpayers are out seventeen thousand or whatever the sum number is, because that was never in the project in the first place. And so this is not work that's, it's work that was never in. It's not like it's something that the, the, the people paid for that's being redone. Uh, what the taxpayers are out is indeed the cost of the hood that's installed. It's going to be removed. They're out the labor that took to hung it, the purchase price of the hood, the labor to take it down. Everything else is incremental that was never in the scope of the project. So indeed, if the taxpayers are out anything, they're out in the neighborhood of my best guess, around fifteen hundred dollars. But, all that said, we had a simple motion on the table. We didn't have to have any of this discussion. The council should never be troubleshooting problems like this at the table. The fact is, with the exception of myself, we don't know what we're talking about. And so we ought to be turning this over to the people that we hire and letting them have an opportunity to do what we're asking, which is completely appropriate. But to sit here and throw people under the bus and just try to troubleshoot is completely inappropriate.
Name was Tarquess.
Am I talking loud enough, Janet? Janice? Getting a little wound up here.
Is everybody else has a comment on this? Mr. Marsters?
Well, I seconded the motion to postpone, but in reality, Mr. Tarquess is right. What's proposed for the, the agenda item here is not related. And I think it's clear, we want more information for the, the hood, which will come back to us anyways. So, I withdraw my second. For postpone.
Yeah, it's actually Mr. Weaver's. And it is a valid motion, because it is, you can always motion to postpone. Anybody else on the motion to postpone until nineteen? Quick call roll.
Weaver?
Yes.
Marsters?
No. This was the motion to postpone.
That's where I was.
Motion to postpone?
No.
Hickey?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Tarquess?
No.
Silver?
No.
All right, motion fails. We're back to fifteen D, resolution approving a change order with Kinzett Plumbing and Heating revised, which is three thousand dollars and six, three thousand and sixty-five cents, which takes out the, uh, previous fourteen. Mr. Tarquess and Mr. Weaver spoke. Anybody else want to speak on this item? All right. Anybody else before we go to response? All right, we're on response. Mr. Weaver?
Like Scott said perfectly clear, nobody up at the table here understands what's going on but him. So I, I don't know what kind of action you guys are going to take. And he don't, he, he told you he don't understand it. That's what I heard him say, and, and I think he might be right. So, what are we going to do?
Mr. Weaver, anybody else on response? All right. Quick call roll.
Tarquess?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Hickey?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Number sixteen E, Mr. Tarquess?
There is no motion. The, the library board has postponed, sent a recommendation to us on sixteen E.
Okay, so we'll pull that. Number eighteen is, uh, public hearing, and, uh, that is administrative recommending approval, A, Resolution Adopting Plan, Estatification Form of Contract, and estimated cost construction of two thousand eleven manhole replacement water main reroute project. Number eleven dash one zero zero one. B, bid tabulation, C, Resolution Award of Contract, McKinney's Excavating Inc. Uh, and this is a public hearing. If you have comments you'd like to make regarding, uh, this, please come to the podium and state your name and address. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Uh, is there a motion, a second, to adopt both resolutions and accept the, uh, bid tabulation?
Hello.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Who else? All right, seeing none. Quick call roll.
Marsters?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Tarquess?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Uh, number nineteen, administrative recommending approval ordinance admitting title-two boards and commissions, chapter twelve, historic preservation commission, section two, organization, paragraph C, in its entirety and a new paragraph C. And I believe this would be on first. Is there a motion and a second?
Hello.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Marsters?
No power.
Who else? Seeing none. Quick call roll.
Marsters?
Yes.
Tarquess?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Number twenty, administrative recommending approval non-budget, budgeted authorization to proceed with changes related to Plaza area storm drainage recommended by the city engineer related to federal Avenue Streetscape Utility Improvement Projects. And before we take a motion, a second, let the city engineer up and hook and kind of just give us a quick background on this so we don't, we don't bump into those who are talking on this one. And also, we'll be joining will be, uh, Mr. Anger from, uh, WHKS.
Thank you. As the mayor said, we got, uh, Mr. Anger here from WHKS answering questions the mayor had for it as well, so. Uh, this item is put on here tonight to address the, the water in the basements of some of the businesses in the Plaza area. That, um, uh, the first, the first water showed up down there last fall during one of the heavier rains while the project was opened up. And since that point, the city, along with our consultant, uh, has been working with property owner, looking at the resolutions and some different options to, uh, possibly remedying the, the problem down there. So, uh, we have looked at a number of things. Um, and as recent as just a few weeks ago, we brought before the council a workshop, um, recommendation, uh, which time, uh, in, in the intermediate, um, the, the property owner was opposed to what we were suggesting or recommending to do. So, um, excuse me, we continued talking with them and looking at, uh, a couple of other options that we had before us, some things that were, um, uh, needed to be discovered. Part of it was a drain at the, at the park end. We wanted to look and see if there was a subdrain that we could install and hook, connect into that, and that was not possible. So we did look at some other viable options. One of those is, the two that are recommended tonight are to, uh, part of the drainage system underneath, there's a, there's an eighteen-inch perforated pipe with some laterals that run into that. And that was to pick up the water that permeates through the pavers and the synthetic turf areas of the Plaza and take it into the storm drain, which heads south to Willow Creek, uh, through the mall. One of the recommendations is to replace that perforated pipe with a solid dual-wall pipe, which will carry the water more directly from there. And one of the, one of the, um, one of the justifications or one of our feelings for switching that pipe out was that the building has a roof drain, a roof drain that runs, uh, that ran underneath the Plaza that was unknown to us until actually the excavation of that, of that area. And due to that volume of water coming off the roof, uh, we felt that that was, uh, that was a proper thing to do is to change that pipe out. The other recommendation is, before you, is to change the fill between the pavers. And rather than using just a natural clean sand, we're proposing to use a, a polymeric sand, which, um, after it's installed, it's wetted, it becomes hard. It also prevents, it helps, uh, prevent the growth of, of grass and weeds and things like that between the pavers. So, um, we feel with that recommendation as well, that's going to, to take the surface water and move it a little bit further away from the buildings before it enters into any of, any of the, uh, turf pervase areas and down into the storm system. So, um, like I said, we have been working with the property owner, uh, over, over the past few months and looking at several different things, and, um, we feel these are two, uh, good options to remedying the problem.
All right, thank you very much, Donald. Uh, is there a motion, a second, on this?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Tarquess, you want to open?
I'll just be very brief. There's, there's a lot of information that... If you don't have a technical background, in the right, there's a lot of information that needs to be inferred. And I sent an email to our city engineer a couple of days ago with half a dozen questions, and I'm very satisfied with the responses. As I'm understanding, the property owner doesn't think that the infiltration has been through the foundation wall. He thinks it's coming up from underneath. And I believe, having spoken, uh, with the city engineer, my understanding of the problem and the recommendation for the solution, that this is, uh, a very good solution for taking care of what we believe to be the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Tarquess. Anybody else? Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, I'm having a, this, you know, Mr. Anger, I asked you for the copies and stuff, looking at what's going to come on and the roof drain. I'm having a hard time believing that this is going to work personally. I do have a question. Mark, when you shut off water, what's that instrument called? It's just a wrench, a big key wrench. How big a handle does that have?
Depending on size, um, so for water maintenance, I mean, I want to say it's probably a twenty-four, thirty-inch bar. And if, on bigger valves, there's, there's a chamber so that you can...
Twenty-four, thirty-inch as well? Well, I was out there today, and I talked to, uh, some business owners. And you know how you put the, the turnoffs along the sidewalk or in front of their... Well, this one is less than one foot from the middle of his door. Very troubling to me. I, I don't suppose anybody went out there to look and see what's going on, it's superficial. That's how I operate. I, I, you know, I can hear all the w, but it's pretty hard to incrementally quickly get it to work around. So I went out and looked at it myself, examined along the digits that you've given it. And I, I suppose Scott didn't have this in one of his six questions, but why would the water shut off be right in the middle of this front door where people will actually trip over it? They already have. And it's kind of crooked already, and, and you couldn't get a wrench in with a twenty-four-inch handle or not even a eighteen-inch handle. It'll hit the door. You won't be able to knock it. So it's, it's already put in, and it's, it's that far from his door.
That's a, that's a service cut-off. That's, that is a service, so that's not the big wrench. That is a small one. Um, the reason it's tipped is because, you know, the project is incomplete, and it, over the winter, it might shift. And I mean, it's, it'll be...
Well, it's going to shift a lot over several winters anyway.
Uh, there's going to be, you know, it's going to be in concrete, so it's going to be a different setting. It's...
I appreciate all your expertise, but we've seen what happens to concrete, and it shut off. This is right in the middle of his doorway. It's just an accident waiting to happen. I looked at all, observed all the other ones, and they're, they go further out and not in front of their doorways. I mean, he's troubled by it, and I kind of was too.
So, those are, they were meant to be, uh, they were meant to be installed in, uh, in somewhere in a straight line so that they were in, so they were in the concrete area and not in the paper. And the reason it's right, and that one was just, I mean, you're, we're looking at that one because it was brought up again, but I know which one you're referring to. But the reason it's right in front of the doors, that's because where the service, the service went into the building. So it, you know, we didn't, we didn't move the services around.
I thought you told me it wasn't there before.
There was, it was, it's just was far away from the building.
Yeah.
It's still in line with the service that went into the building.
That line's pretty crooked, but...
Is that, is this line linking into the building? I'm trying to understand why we're talking about a drain.
No, we're talking about the shut-off.
The shut-off.
I know, but is it linking into, that's what the issue is about.
We hope not.
Okay. Well, this was an issue, Mayor, believe me.
No, I, I understand. I'm just talking about the germane-ness of, of what we have in front of us here, so. Um, can I help? Mr. Edie?
Is the property owner going to be satisfied with these plans or not? It doesn't sound like...
Probably not for a week, no.
Because I had a discussion with them, a meeting actually, uh, two weeks ago. I know there was some issue, but it looks like you've changed a few things, so. I know they weren't happy at all with the first ideas I brought forward, but has this been communicated with them?
Oh, absolutely. Last week, we held another meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Edie. Anybody else? Mr. Nelson?
I describe this, if there's four properties primary we're dealing with that have the leak problem. Four properties on the Plaza floor.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Anybody else on the response? Mr. Weaver?
Mr. Ram, Mr. Anger, you guys do a great job. Here's the last paragraph. I just just got to copy it. Upon completion of the project, the city may consider remedies if it is determined the city is responsible for storm ground water entering the property owner's basement. It almost sounds like we're expecting storm ground to go in there, and then the, the whole thing's going to be done. This is, this is your vent do-over that doesn't really matter, and we don't want any information from the international code. God forbid we get smart as Scott is. But now here we're going to have to say to us, the project's done, the plaza's done, the streetscape's done, and guess what we get to do? We get to drive back down there with the equipment, dig it up again to correct the remedy. That's not my game plan. That's over that fake grass we're putting down there, and that's got to be swept with little plastique balls and rubber blades, and I am totally, I don't, I just don't know what to think. That's not even an option, to, to say that, well, we got it done, and, and a year and a half later, it leaks? Well, you know, it'll just be another incremental thirty-five hundred dollars. Who cares? You know, I, I hope we, I just don't know what the solution is myself. And you know, you guys worked hard and gave him a solution. A fifty thousand, is it thirty-seven thousand or fifty thousand?
The one side was twenty-seven thousand.
And the other side was?
Twenty-three, yeah.
Yeah, and we offered to do that, but that got turned down. So, to me, it already looks like it's going to wind up in the courts already. And, and they've already had a lawyer meeting with everybody, so, you know, I, I, this, this little paragraph here just throws me for a loop. I don't know what the answer is, because quite frankly, I'm one of those people at this table and just don't understand what's happening here. Yeah?
So then this time?
You know, earlier in amendment two of the mentions, you know, we, we can't, I can't, I'm not going to stand up there and tell you that. Um, that, you know, I can guarantee that they're not going to be in the corner basement, because I, I can't do that. But what we're doing, we're, you know, we are moving the, the point that the water infiltrates. We're moving it from five feet away in the building to sixteen, eighteen feet. That's going to, I think that's going to help tremendously. We have talked about other things that we could have done in preparation for the event that they should get water in the basement after this is completed, and that was annoying for us as well.
But we are, we are going back in to take out that perforated line and put a stop up. Right, so we're already making a change from this, this line here that's been put in and buried already.
Correct.
So that's just two weeks old right there, so that's, you know, bless you guys' hearts, but it's like we're reaching for... And, and no, you can't guarantee anything, but he's telling me that his basements have been dry. Never had water, so I, I, I'm lost.
Angus, Bernard, anybody else? Mr. Tarquess, time to respond.
Yeah, the questions that Councilman Weaver has just posed tie very closely to the question that Councilman Hickey asked. We have to remember that our first obligations to the taxpayer, not to the building owner. Our job is to do the very best we can for the building owner, but looking out for the taxpayer first. And to that end, you try your very best to identify the problem, the root cause of the problem, and then you come up with what you believe to be the very best solution to the problem, which is what staff has put in front of us. For any one of us to come back and second-guess staff or the resource that they're using on the technicalities or the viability of the solution would be wrong, because they have more expertise on this issue than all of us put together. What, what staff is trying to communicate with the upon completion of the project clause is that if indeed this doesn't take care of the problem, we're not going to leave the owner high and dry. We'll do whatever we take. We'll do whatever we need to do to make sure that the, that the owner is at least in a whole condition before the project's started. And that's all anybody can hope for. At the end of the day, engineering's not an exact science. It's a matter of identifying problems and doing the very best you can to solve the problems, whether it be any water line, any road, any sewer, or repairing infiltration problems like we have with this. It is financially impossible to engineer a problem or engineer a project to where there will not be any mistakes or there will not be any, any, uh, unforeseen. You simply could not afford to pay the amount of engineering that it would take. If you think about this project, it's all underground until we get, until we top it out. The only way we could have engineered away every potential problem would have been to dig the whole Plaza up and see what we got, and then start engineering. Well, that never would have worked. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Tarquess. Any else? All right. Do you want to extend the debate, Mr. Weaver?
I would ask to extend the debate.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Weaver?
I just want to say this. And one of the remediations for this property owner is, is that his basement, existing basement does not have a sump pump in it presently. But this development, we've offered to say, well, if we have to, we can put a sump pump in in the beaver dam system. That would piss me off too, if I had a development going next to my house that doesn't have a sump pump in it right now, and some cat comes in and bills right next to me, and now I'm going to have a water problem, and I have to have a sump pump running, discharged. I got to worry about it if it's going on, going off. I got to pay the utility bill. That's just not suitable to me. Now, if you want to run over one taxpayer to protect the rest on a, on an issue like that, I think that's wrong. But that is one of our things. We said, well, we can go in and put in sump pumps in the four, his four buildings, and put in a beaver system. So when the water comes in, we can direct it to the sump pumps that goes out. But now he's got four sump pumps he's running, paying for, and he's got to worry about them functioning all the time when the four-inch rain comes. I know, I know little old ladies that stayed up all night when they got three inches of rain. We just forget about them and go with the development next to them. That's not how I govern. So, I'm just confused. I'm, I'm being really, really honest here. You know what? I got the courage to admit my ignorance, but I got the knowledge to ask some questions too. It just doesn't add up. I'm sorry, and I don't think it's you guys' fault.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Anybody else on the... All right. We got a motion and a second. Uh, solidization to proceed with changes related to Plaza area storm drainage recommended by city engineer related to federal Avenue Streetscape and Utilities Improvement Project. Quick call roll.
Tarquess?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Marsters?
Yes.
Hickey?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Number twenty-one, administrative, uh, presenting for council consideration authorization to perform with a citywide revitalization program that would offer residential property tax exemption for both new construction and eligible revocation. Is there a motion and a second?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, Mr. Tarquess?
I don't have much to say. We've passed this through a couple workshops. I think we've had good council dialogue during the workshops. I trust the staff is being responsive. They're trying to build a, a, a policy that represents the collective whole. Uh, there may be pieces of it in there that individuals don't like, but that's pretty typical as long as it represents the will of, of the consensus group. Um, I support it without condition, and I appreciate the work you've done.
Mr. Tarquess, anybody else?
All right, is this something that our city attorney, are we going to have to hire the, uh, more of the legal out? Or can we do it in the House? Seems like we're hiring more and more legal stuff out.
Um, staff will do all of the work that's involved in creating the plan and doing all the legwork of notifying, there's a requirement to notify both property owners and tenants citywide if we create this district citywide. Um, we asked the Allois Law Firm to do the ordinance establishing work for us, and, and there are just some legal documents that get... Well, we haven't done an urban, uh, urban revitalization plan for years, and, um, I, I certainly can go back and look at those ordinances and, and between legal and myself craft something. Um, whether we just have them check, check it over or not, I'm not sure, but...
But our own city attorney can't check it over?
No, that's what I mean, between the attorney and ourselves, yes.
Because I know it's, you've got the number here, five thousand dollars. By the way, do you support...
Mostly that, mostly that is just a notification that we have to do.
By the way, are you, is your heart and soul behind issuing this as a great idea?
Um, I think that, uh, it's an incentive that we can offer. Um, some people will take advantage of it, and, and, uh, it, it will work for them. In terms of spurring, uh, uh, a lot of new development, given the economy, I'm not exactly sure.
Well, another question I have is, what's going to happen? Is, will there be a conflict to say if somebody takes on, uh, the, the new housing construction program over there at Nyackon, which says, it says this, it says, "The assistance is available to any home buyer pays down a payment of twenty-five percent for a home's purchase price." For example, on a hundred fifty thousand dollar home, the program will pay the individual thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, are we going to let, are we going to let, you know, this going to come up? Some guy's going to say, I'm going to build myself a new home. I'm going to get this tax abatement. I'm going to go over here and get the thirty-seven thousand. Are, are we going to, is that going to become a conflict? Are people going to be, is there a rule? Because it doesn't say here that it's, you know, you know, like a lot of coupons, they say not to do it with any other coupons, you know, just the one, you know, they give you in there. Well, is there going to be a conflict here when this starts going? Because there's a great program over there at Nyackon right, way bigger than the abatement. If you build a hundred fifty thousand dollar house, you get a check for thirty-seven thousand.
What I can tell you about that program is that no local developers took advantage of that.
Well, still, it's not done though.
It, it is. There are no more, uh, the money's done, and there will be no more application rounds.
Really?
Really.
This is April and May two thousand and eleven?
There's money out in the small towns and other counties of the Nyackon region for that, but, uh, we had no Mason City developers, uh, come forward and make application for that.
Just in the past month, we have received many inquiries of the program. So you're saying that it's done in Mason City?
There are none, that, none of those homes are built or will be built in Mason City. They're all in the smaller towns or county.
I don't remember if you've seen it advertised, you have...
We did have public meetings with, uh, developers.
What about just a guy must build a house? Sorry, developer. Do you have any to him? It's okay.
Mr. Marsters?
You know, I thought long and hard about this revitalization program. Pam, I recall one of your opening statements at the work session, and don't, this isn't word for word what he said, but basically, "The program will probably have little impact on increasing building..." on increasing building, construction and development." And you've pretty much repeated that tonight, and you've questioned rather well. You know, if I want a larger garage or a new garage, or an addition to my house, or even want a new house, the first thing I need is the financial ability. The number one factor, having the money to do the construction. Saving the minimal property tax over the five-year period, as Pam stated, has very little to do with whether I build a, the addition or build a garage or not. I'm probably going to build it if I want it, and I'm going to do it, I'm going to do it. So I see no point in implementing a plan to lower taxes for a few who can obviously afford the building to begin with and probably will do it to begin with, in the belief of raising tax revenues, which has been the discussion at work session, is all about raising revenues for the city, when most likely the same building would take place without a tax price. So all that we're really doing is reducing tax revenues for the city as buildings takes place, and at the same time, uh, we should have no tax increases, but we continue to raise taxes. You know, I'm always amazed at how fast stuff like this moves forward. And yet, when we can do something to protect the majority of the citizens, like we've been pushing for many years now, to do code enforcement, so that we protect the property value of the homes you have, we move like snails. Nothing's happened. So, you know, for almost eight years on this city council, the number one issue I've had to deal with is property maintenance issues within the city. The number one issue I've dealt with in eight years is protecting people's property values. I won't support this tonight because I don't see that it's a profit or, or any advantage to it.
Thank you, Mr. Marsters. Anybody else? Mr. Hickey?
Um, again, seventy-five thousand, probably not going to create a huge incentive, but it's at least a little bit of incentive. Um, if I remember, Mr. Turnquist showed, uh, last time where somebody built a two-hundred-thousand-dollar house, we're still getting valuations on a hundred twenty-five thousand. So we're gaining a little bit. Is it going to be a make or break deal? Probably not. But what, the thing I like about this is at least we're creating a culture, um, but I, I said this before, that we're at least trying to do something, do some, um, increased construction, whether it be homes, garage, whatever it may be. I know after our last meeting, Mr. Weaver asked our city assessor what he thought about it, and he showed us the figures of what's happened against us, the downturn of our economy. And basically, we've had very little construction whatsoever. Am I wrong on that? But Max?
Uh, I think that Don gave us some how to build a house, like you got the information.
Yeah.
Looks pretty close actually, doesn't it? Last four years.
Discussion on that table.
But he even, even the city assessor said something's better than nothing, and if I remember, that's what he told us. So, uh, it isn't going to hurt. I can see where, hopefully, maybe if nothing else, it's going to possibly increase some valuations over the long term. Uh, it may help on some construction, and it may help, uh, some contractors get some more jobs, so I'm for it. Thank you.
Mr. Nelson?
Thank you. You're okay? No. Now, what was I going to say? You gotta be careful, Mike. Don't do that. A couple of things, I, I concur with some of the comments made previously on the citywide urban revitalization program. I guess everybody knows where a lot of my emphasis is in this community that's cleaning it up. We have moved real quickly on this, I heard about it some time ago, but here we are, asked for approval tonight, and it probably will be approved tonight. The only objection I would have, uh, I add to it, would be, I talked to two contractors on this project, and, and number one, they said they don't believe it should be a tax break for accessory structures like the garages. I like see that. Also, the other comment I, I received were there should be a one-time opportunity per applicant, or at least ten years between to keep people doing new, new construction, house jumping to avoid paying taxes, or landlords with multiple properties. That's the two things I heard from two different contractors. A little late to incorporate that. Uh, you know, may, maybe this will stimulate some development. I, Pam, there's some reservations with some people on this council. You know, forty, I may be wrong on the figures, but I've heard this for eleven years, forty percent of the people that work in Mason City do not live here. Forty percent. And I believe it, to the place I go, I ask where they're from, like, well, Rockwell and Manly, and so I, I believe it. And maybe this will stimulate some, some people, I sure hope so. But, uh, you know, I've been trying to clean up this community with international maintenance code. We've had two work sessions, uh, this past year, nothing, nothing's, we just discussed it, nothing's come forward. I just wish we could move quickly in the next month or two to take segments out of the international maintenance code to, you know, prove the appearance of this town on North Federal and throughout Surfing Pacific, neighborhoods in this community. I believe if I was a businessman coming in this community and looking it over, you know, some areas are not very impressive to generate business opportunities, I'll be honest with you. We need to put more emphasis on cleaning up this town. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Any else before we move response? Hi, I'm responsible. Mr. Weaver?
Well, then, Don, are you supporting it tonight?
No, it will not be.
Yeah, because I mean, you gave a memo to us that you said if, if garages weren't taken out...
Well, if they're, if, yeah, but I, probably too late to get those two things incorporated.
It's never too late.
If they incorporate that, I would through it. Yes, I would.
It's never too late if you can sell your case, if you're smart enough to sell your case up here. No, you know, actually, Don, with, with what you want to do is clean the town up, you, you should allow garages. The garage I put up is a sixty thousand dollar garage. Then I can put my stuff in that garage and my yard will be cleaned up. But I'm having a little issue with the financing to get my stuff, you know, out of the yard, and I'm paying a hundred bucks for a storage unit already, and you guys are tagging me already going down the alleys. It's just spring, spring just got here. Give the citizens a chance, you know, now you're giving them a ten-day notice. I think you got one, didn't you? Get ten days to clean your yard up.
Yeah.
I mean, it, the weather hasn't even been that nice to get out there, so, you know, I think you'd want garages in there. I hope it works, I hope it does.
I'll come back to you, Mr. Nelson. Done, Mr. Weaver? Mr. Nelson, do you have a comment?
No, no comment.
I appreciate your opinions, so, Councilman Weaver. Mr. Turnquist, I'm responsible.
Yeah, I, I concur with Councilman Weaver on this particular point. I don't have a problem with leaving garages in. I think it's, I think it strengthens the opportunity, and it, and it can't always be about, do we have an opportunity to get more taxes from the people? This, this could very easily turn into a quality life thing, and, and to Councilman Weaver's point, even if we don't realize a dime of incremental income from property taxes because most people are doing garages, we still have people spending construction dollars. Not everybody's going to build their own garages, it's going to create some construction jobs. We're going to have materials being sold from local retail businesses, which does create sales tax, and it creates revenue and churn in the community, and we create structures whereby, as, as Councilman Weaver says, now maybe people got a place to put some of this stuff that's, that's been getting stored outside. And even if that doesn't happen, a new garage has to raise, has to raise the property value of, of the lot that it sits on, and, and it's about adding value to the neighborhood that you're in. And so I don't see a downside to it whatsoever.
Mr. Turnquist? Mr. Hickey?
I'm going to concur with what you said. Uh, that was the point I was going to make, and I respect your opinion there, Mr. Nelson, but say, even with this program of a hundred people wanting to build a twenty thousand-dollar garage, that's two million dollars, and it would stimulate the Mason City's economy into next year as far as contractors and employment and different issues, so I don't see that issue with it either. Thank you.
Mr. Hickey? Any else, I'm responsible. Alright. We've got a motion in a second. Quick call.
Turnquist?
Yes.
Silver?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Marsters?
No.
Hickey?
Yes.
Nelson?
No.
Alright, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Number twenty-two, Councilmember Nelson recommending approval resolution committed to the funding of North Iowa Corridor Economic Development Corporation, report three years beginning fiscal year two thousand eleven. Is there a motion?
Mr. Ray?
So, motion? Who's making it?
We have to have a motion.
I made the motion.
It's, you're recommending, so go ahead.
Yeah. I made the motion that the, the city council funds the North Iowa Corridor EDC in the years two thousand twelve, thirteen, two thousand, two thousand eleven, twelve, two thousand twelve, thirteen, and two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Then I have a few comments.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Mr. Nelson, you can go ahead with your comments.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Mayor. But first of all, I appreciate the members of the EDC North Iowa Corridor here this evening, and two, two staff I believe, including our, our new executive director. I am requesting, and I hope unanimous support tonight, from my fellow city council members for the resolution for three-year funding for the, the years previously stated, the next three years. The majority of support of the city council of this resolution would be a positive indicator to our citizens, of, of our council's support for economic development in our community and north central Iowa. In addition, approval of this resolution sends a very clear message to our business, industry partners, and our present and future EDC financial investors, that this council stands behind the North Iowa Corridor EDC. I do encourage my fellow city council members for their support of this resolution this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Mr. Marsters, you have?
Yeah, just a couple of addition, additional things that, the other thing it allows is the EDC probably to do better planning, knowing that they have pretty much a set dollar on coming in for the next three years without having to worry about, are we going to cut them? On the other hand, it also protects the city for the next three years of saying, okay, odds are that there's no increase. There's never a reason they can't come back and ask for more, but realistically, they're not going to ask for an increase for the next three years, so it really is a win-win for both parties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marsters. Ms. Silver?
Well, um, I appreciate what Mr. Nelson's trying to do here for the EDC, but I would really like to make a motion to postpone this for two months and bring it back on June seventh. Um, and the reason is, is I just believe we're getting ahead of ourselves here.
So, just to make sure we're clear, you're making a motion to postpone to June seventh?
That's correct.
I'll show it.
Um, Ms. Silver, you have a discussion?
As I say, that I think we're just kind of getting ahead of ourselves here. We know a vision here in Mason City. We're shovel-ready, we've got a lot of great things going here with this council, but we need to take a look at the big picture. Um, if we could postpone this for two months, we could offer any potential businesses every opportunity here in Mason City. And what I mean by that is, let's get the micro enterprise program brought back in and let's get it passed. Um, we've got the facade program, we've got the common ground with, you know, Mason City, Clear Lake, the corridor, everybody working together in the county. We've got the tax, um, rebates that we just passed here for new and expansion, the TIP optimization. You know, it's very important to take care of the, you know, these pieces of the puzzle. Uh, we need to entice business. Let's give them the appetizer, main menu, our main meal and dessert. You know, let's get these programs on the agenda, get them passed, and bring back the three-year support to the EDC on June seventh.
Thank you, Ms. Silver. Uh, report, Mr. Turnquist, second.
Yeah, I appreciate the postponement. If I were forced to vote on this tonight with the initial motion on the table, I would have to vote no. And I want to explain that, we've got a lot of people here from the EDC, we've probably got clearly watching in. One of the five reasons for funding here, I believe, is to make sure that investors see a commitment from the city council, well, listen very closely. One of, one of the, reason number five, they catch our commitment. Well, you know what? I don't see a hundred and five as the ceiling. I see a hundred and five as the absolute minimum that I'm willing to commit on an annual basis. And I will tell you right now that whether we ever pass three-year funding or not, I'm committed to a hundred and five every year I'm on the council as a minimum investment. If indeed job creation and growth in the community is our number one need, a hundred and five's a minimum. Okay? So, I want the people, Clear Lake, part of our North Iowa Corridor, all of our partners to understand that I have different reasons for coming from, from where I'm coming from on this particular issue. And it goes back to micro enterprise. To me, it's patently absurd that the very last meeting, we walk away from a fifteen-thousand-dollar expense that stands to create, it, it was, it was a huge opportunity for small business, stands to create jobs in the community, incentivize spending in the community with absolutely no risk to the taxpayers other than the fifteen thousand to set it up, because everything thereafter was based on actual receipts, monies that are spent inside the Mason City city limits. And we'll walk away from that fifteen thousand dollars that has a very real impact on small business while we pretend that we care about small business and job creation, and then come back two weeks later and we're, we're talking about committing three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in general overhead. And, you know, indirectly, that may help small business, but the most of that goes to marketing and overhead to run an organization, which I support, but our number one goal is job creation. And even a few minutes ago, the discussion that we had, um, on, on the residential program. You know, the, the, when the rubber hits the road and we're trying to do real things to help real people right now, we tend to want to stiffen up and say no. And yet, we want to create the illusion that we really care. I'm not about creating illusions. You have my commitment whether we ever pass this or not. And it's also important for people to know that even if we do pass this, and when we pass it, it's nonbinding, no council can commit future councils to spend it. And so it's all show anyway, it's basically sending the signal to local businesses that we're in for the long haul. I don't have a problem with that, but it's already been alluded that it could change under dire circumstances. So, you know, let's be, let's be, let's do things that are a little bit more substantial. I will never support this until we put micro enterprise in place. And, and people in Mason City, you've seen me now for going on six years, you know that more often than not, I'm the guy looking for compromise, I'm the guy looking for common ground, and I'm trying to do everything I can to get as many perspectives represented in whatever we do at the table. I very seldom draw lines in the sand. I'm drawing a line in the sand. No micro enterprise, no three-year funding. We pass micro enterprise, and the very next agenda item can be three-year funding, and you won't hear a peep out of me except, yes, this is a good thing. You know, the, the micro enterprise program has the support of, of the EDC. In fact, Councilman Nelson, I think you voted for it twice at EDC meetings.
Never voted.
Okay, so you remain anonymous without saying anything, and that was gutsy. We've got a local banker, a president of a local bank, that has an elected position on the Federal Reserve Board that says, wow, this is creative and this is good. But in all of our collective financial wisdom, we're ignoring that opinion, saying, no, we're smarter than that. We stay at a Holiday Inn Express. Not interested. Pass micro enterprise, do something positive, and you got my yes vote on three-year funding.
Thank you, Mr. Turnquist. Mr. Nelson?
Well, I remember two years ago, Scott, but... Councilman Turnquist, you're on the, the city council. Uh, the request for funding from the EDC was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I was the only one, two years ago, that encouraged the hundred and twenty thousand, and we ended up a hundred and four, a hundred and five. So that minimum and maximum that you speak of is not true. Now, you know, your position on the EDC funding, you know, if you're trying to leverage me, you picked on the wrong guy. My position has been very clear on the micro initiative, and I will be changing that position. And so, you know, that's where I stand. I guess that this will probably be defeated tonight, or I heard tonight, and that's unfortunate. I think it's sending the wrong message, a real wrong message out in our community.
You know, the EDC, North Iowa Corridor, is our number one resource for jobs and retention of jobs in this community. They're it. This is us. We just fund it. We fund incentives when job opportunity industry comes to this table. That's our role. And I'm really encouraged there with our new director. I think we've got a Dan Day and Mike Day. I look for big changes to happen in this community as far as good job opportunities. I just hate to start his first couple months on the job with this response. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. With Weaver?
You know, this is fun, man. This is fun. How can you sit at this table knowing what I know on this country and defend bankers and the Federal Reserve? Are you kidding me? They got billions of dollars. They're not willing to lend any of it out for God's sake to bankers. That's right. So anyway, you know, I'm your guy. I told you, Randy, and I told another board member of John John Pavichon, I'm the swing vote. I told you what I needed. Scott's telling you what he needs. I told you already what I needed. You don't have the courage to write it forward. You're not gonna get Don Nelson. What you're doing is give him two more months here to feed Don more doughnuts and win him over. Lay off it, would you? Seriously, lay off it. I'm not so sure this is an indictment of anything good. I can't think of anything in this community that anybody's ever turned down any company that has come here before this council and denied them economic development, grants or money. Any company that was gonna bring jobs. And now, all we're doing is moving businesses across town. I can't tell you when you have had another success. It's pretty ballsy of me to come here and ask for more money, a three-year commitment. Once the fair came to us, they gives a three-year commitment. Just tonight, somebody said tonight, my first obligation is to the taxpayers. Not a single business. Well, my obligation is to the taxpayers. I can't tell you what's gonna happen in two years. I don't even know what this idea is about. I don't even understand. It doesn't mean anything. Scott just said tonight, it's what you call it, window dressing, or it's... You can't encumber a future council. Leave it alone. Why cause a controversy? Why beg on Councilman Nelson down there? June 7th, what is that? The D-Day? What's going on? Is that Don Day, June 7th? Don't, don't, don't. We'll work on him. He'll give us two more months to work on him. That's what the plan is, really? When I've had the courage to call you up, talk to you, talk to another board member, and tell you exactly what I needed if you want my support for the micro enterprise fund. And so, and it's all in the mayor's hands right there. A $165,000 appointment to human rights. That's the price on an appointment to human rights. And you're letting him get away with it down here, just because he doesn't like somebody. It's worth 165,000 bucks. I've laid it out for you. You guys just don't wanna talk about it. I thought this was a bad idea to begin with. I didn't, I couldn't understand it. There's a lot of organizations that like a commitment from us for three years. Literally, you'd like a commitment from us. I don't get it. Go show me something, and maybe we can talk. But this scam tonight, I wonder what's going on Friday. I gotta make a phone call Friday. I told somebody, staff at City Hall, to give you a heads up, 'cause I didn't wanna bug you. But this is what they're gonna do, and this is what we found out. Two more months of working you over. You're gonna cave. Anybody who's been around Don Nelson knows he's not gonna, that ain't gonna happen. Again, I'm gonna tell you right here publicly, I'm your swing vote. I'm your swing vote, and not one of you wanna do what I wanna do because you just don't think... Oh, it's the mayor. It's the mayor. If anybody knew what I wanted in return for my vote, that's what we're doing here. Look, we're logrolling. Scott's doing it tonight. I'm doing it. They do it in Boeing. They do it in Washington. If people found out what all it would take to get my support, they'd think you guys are silly.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. Ms. Silver?
It just doesn't...
Hold on, before you go, is there anybody that wants to go? Before we move to response?
You just have one question, right?
Yeah.
The North County June 8th day.
Why, June 7th is what I have now?
June 7th is just the first...
June 7th. First council.
June...
Mr. Hickey, you have?
We can straight for December.
Or bargaining.
Mr. Hickey, you have?
All right. I came here tonight, I guess, not even thinking about micro enterprise, but to talk about the three-year funding. Of course, I've been a huge supporter of anything that has to do with pretty much jobs or economic development. But I did have a conversation with Councilman Weaver, I think it was Friday, that I didn't quite understand this myself, the three-year commitment part. I think I understand it, but for different reasons. But I just didn't see the commitment part of it. Well, I vote for economic development, 105,000 a year. Yes, I'll vote for it every year. I have no issue with that. Do I wanna see the micro enterprise come back? Heck, yeah, I would like to see that. I was supportive of that as well. But I'm not sure where this is all coming out of play as far as that goes. So that's just where I'm at. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickey. Anybody else have a response? Ms. Silver?
I just wanna finish by saying that it just doesn't make any sense to put this in place if we're not gonna put our best foot forward. We may not get that second chance. There's no free look policies here, folks. It's all or nothing, and we should be getting tired of the nothings. We're better than the rest. Let's sell this community. Let's give them the perks that go along with it. Thank you.
Ms. Silver, you have a response?
Mr. Tarnquist? Yeah, I have one more round. Max is right. We are logrolling here. But the difference between the logroll that I'm doing and the logroll that others are doing is mine's focused completely on economic development. Micro enterprise and three-year funding, economic development. Whereas some of the other logrolling is pulling at things that have nothing to do with economic development. You know, now, I went with that two years. I don't remember the fight two years ago over funding, but what I do remember from about two years ago is Scott Holtz, he's sitting right there handing back a check because we muscled up on him, because a deal's a deal. Well, okay, if a deal was a deal then, a deal ought to be a deal right now. And the six of us sat in the City Hall in February, and we made a deal on the budget. And the deal had four primary components. First of all, staff did exactly what we asked them to do. They balanced the budget without using reserves. We then used surpluses in a number of different accounts to buy down the tax increases. It was a great move the council did. We worked together. We got it done. The next piece was, we had one council that was Councilman Nelson that very much wanted to take non-bargaining employees, primarily staff, and increase their salaries from what was in the budget at 1% to go to 2%. Now, we talk a lot about saving money, but you know what? Staff salaries is not an investment in the community. It's payroll. Let's call a spade a spade. Don wanted that real bad. A lot of us didn't. The other thing in the budget was we revisited police radios. At one point in time, we were gonna bond for them. Then we switched, and we were gonna make the police pay for them for forfeiture funds, which had a very significant impact on the police department. It was about, represented about 30, 35% of the forfeiture fund money that they had available to them. Whereas if we bond for it, the cost to each and every one of us in Mason City was less than one penny on our property taxes on an annual basis. There were some that wanted to move that back, others that didn't really care. The piece that I articulated, that I cared very much about, was micro enterprise. So what did we do in the deal? We said, okay, Don, you know what? Here's something you really want. You can have your 1% to 2% increase for staff. We won't fight you on that. We'll take care of the police radios. We're not gonna fight over that. And we'll put micro enterprise in the budget. So far, the only thing that's been pulled out of that deal is micro enterprise. Well, gosh darn it, a deal is a deal. We sat around the table. We said, you know what? We're not gonna create a scene at budget time when we come to the public hearings. We did. Okay, we got past that. And then the very next meeting, we created a scene on micro enterprise. We made a deal. The problem is, there was not a single person from the public sitting up there. For all the complaints, we hear about raising property taxes. Nobody from the media was there. Nobody from the public was there. It was just us girls sitting here at the table that knows that we made that deal. I'm not gonna let people forget we made that deal. You know what? We want the community to trust our city council. If we can't trust ourselves, how can we expect the citizens to trust our city council? And I don't trust the Mason City City Council.
Anybody else have a response?
Well said.
Anybody else have a response?
Mr. Weaver? Yeah, I trust the Mason City Council. I know what's up here. I don't like some of it sometimes, but I trust the Mason City. It's way too dramatic. The other thing is, I never promised anybody. I never promised anybody, ever, that I wouldn't make a scene up here. That's not a lie. Maybe not. Not at all. There's no way. That's a lie. I never promised anybody I wouldn't make a scene. So, you know, this is way too dramatic. Really is. It's kind of entertaining. And I'm not a girl. And here's a little long, but I'm not a girl. And I find that offensive to women out there.
Anybody else? All right. This is on the motion. Motion to postpone to June 7th, the first Tuesday in June. We have a motion in a second. This is a simple motion, so the mayor has the option to vote. Kirk, call her on.
Silver? Yes. Tarnquist?
Yes.
Weaver?
No.
Hickey?
Yes.
Marsters?
No.
Nelson?
Motion carries. And that concludes our order of events. We'll have a public listing post here in five minutes.
Don, make sure you tell them what kind of doughnuts you like.
I always do.
Don't let them go to waste.